We're ready to go. First item on the agenda tonight is a consideration recommendation for the purchase of ammunition by the police department, Chief McLaughlin.
I'd like you to indulge me for a minute if you will. After a very lengthy time-consuming process, we finally decided on a deputy chief. I'd like to publicly recognize our deputy chief and identify him. Please step up. It's Kevin Gray, retiree of Maryland State Police and Amtrak, a wealth of information, a wealth of knowledge. And so far, he started on Tuesday, and it's been a great fit. So I would like to give him a chance to speak to you if that's possible.
Good evening. I want to express my appreciation for the opportunity to serve the citizens of the city of Laurel. I'm excited about it. As the chief indicated, that I had extensive experience in law enforcement, and did not get there by myself. There's always somebody there who enabled me to be in a position, to be in a position to gain the notoriety and the experience and education that I have gained. But I appreciate the opportunity. I'm looking forward to it with a lot of energy and a lot of excitement. So if there's anything I can do to assist you all, and I'm sure you all extend the same courtesy to me, so thank you very much.
Welcome.
Congratulations, chief, and welcome on board. You gonna stick around a little bit so we all can talk to you for a minute? Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. President, council members, mayor, before you, you should have a memo dated August 12th, 2015, bid recommendations for the purchase of ammunition. As we discussed during budget preparation, we are getting extended delivery times in excess of eight to 12 months. In fact, we are currently receiving ammunition that was ordered last year during the last fiscal year. Our current line item for ammunition is $35,000. As you recall, during the budget preparation, we asked for a one-time increase of $15,000 to ensure that we had adequate backup and adequate ammunition on hand. There's currently a Maryland State contract that is available for usage by us, and it is through the gun shop of Vincent Town, New Jersey, which is currently where we're getting our ammunition on the same contract. Requesting approval for $49,986.97 for purchase of all ammunitions that we use, that would be handgun, shotgun, and long guns. That would conclude my report.
Okay. Questions from the council? Mr. Smalls.
Chief, I'm sorry that I missed what you said earlier about your budget. Could you just repeat that briefly when you said that you'd ask for additional funds, et cetera? How much was that, and what's your total budget?
The current approved line item is $35,000. We asked for a one-time increase of $15,000 to make sure that we had adequate backup. You know, with the new officers, we are required by the Maryland Police Training Commission to qualify a minimum one time. We go at least twice a year. We have a lot of new officers. We do a lot of remedial training. I would rather than go to the range and practice and have the ammunition to practice than not to be proficient in firearms. Snipers go about once a month. SWAT team goes at least quarterly. So we do go through a lot of ammunition, but it is for being prepared.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you, Ms. President.
Ms. Nicholas.
A question. Is there a shelf life on ammunition?
It's very, it's a lengthy shelf life. Our ammunition, we rotate, so we don't even have that worked. That is an issue.
And so you have, like, how long does it last when you order this shipment? How long do you think it'll last, just estimate it with the different trainings that you have?
I would hope that with this, with this order, it should keep us in, we should have at least six months of backup available.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Curry.
I have no problems with this.
Chief, can you tell me where you're gonna take the additional $15,000 from?
It was identified in the budget as an additional line item.
It was identified?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have no further questions. Council all set to vote on this on Monday?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Again.
Is there a time of the essence, or can we go?
Item number two has been withdrawn from the agenda for more work by the department.
And I also would like to note that Mr. Les is running a little bit late. He had a couple of meetings that were late dealing with the Tuxit River, and so I would bring him up to date when he either gets here or later today. Item number three on the agenda is the update on the Laurel Shopping Center revitalization overlay zone. Ms. Pulli.
Good evening. The applicant federal realty is requesting concept overlay approval of a revitalization overlay application, RO1-1, 2015, by ordinance number 1848. They're proposing to demolish 52,000 square feet of vacant commercial space to construct 180-unit apartment complex with 100 associated parking spaces. This application was heard in front of the planning commission on May 12th, 2015. However, the commission tabled the application because they want a staff to work with the applicant on some transportation, traffic, and parking issues because the applicant was asking for a parking waiver, 782 parking spaces. So now, moving forward, the applicant, on July 27th, they submitted their application and amended it a little bit to include that prior to the building of 50,000 square feet of additional commercial space that they will have to come back to the planning commission to get an additional parking waiver. And at that time, staff will be able to analyze the parking conditions on site. So therefore, the additional 50,000 square feet of commercial space that they wanted to build is not supposed to be judged at this time. So we're just looking at the applicant demolishing 50,000 square feet of commercial space and building 180 units. And since then, that staff and the applicant have worked together, and their parking waiver that they're requesting now is gonna be for 338 parking spaces. However, the city will be asking that the applicant put in a light at Fourth and Montrose Street and requesting that they remove the 32 perpendicular and parallel parking spaces before you get to Fourth Street in the parking center. And that would allow the parking waivers to be raised to 370 parking spaces as opposed to 338. And just before I conclude, the application would be heard at the planning commission on September 15th. And then I just wanna read that a letter came in on September 2nd from Mr. Jeffrey Berman, who is vice president of Berman Enterprises. He wrote a letter to Mayor Mo, and he stated that federal realty is petitioning the city to adopt an ordinance that would allow for redevelopment of Laurel Mall, but it should read Laurel Shopping Center. We at Berman Enterprises are generally in favor of the proposed development subject to the affirmation of our rights based on previous written agreements with federal realty. These rights include the following: pedestrian walking access from 312 Marshall through the existing shopping center as shown marked on Exhibit A to this letter will remain open unless changes are specifically agreed to by Berman Enterprises. Parking in the areas marked Exhibit A to this letter will remain open to the tenants at 312 Marshall on a first-come, first-served basis, and these spaces will not be restricted without being specifically agreed to by Berman Enterprises. And free parking available, excuse me, parking available for employees at Laurel Shopping Center is also available on a first-come, first-served basis to the tenants at 312 Marshall Avenue. Principals of Berman Enterprises would like to have been at this hearing as well as the hearings on September 15th. However, both fall on the Jewish holiday of Rosh Hashemah, and thus, no Berman enterprise principals are able to attend. The second city council hearing regarding this matter falls on September 28th, 2015, which is also a Jewish holiday, and no one from Berman can attend. We therefore respectfully ask that the federal realty affirm our rights done to the above to the city council and planning and zoning at this hearing in our absence. If federal is unable or unwilling to affirm our rights this evening, we respectfully ask that the September 28th hearing be postponed to a day that is not a Jewish holiday so that we can be present to make our case. Respectfully, Jeffrey Berman. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And obviously, that'll made a part of the record. Thank you. Ms. Curry, any questions?
Looks like you've been working hard. I congratulate everybody involved. What are we doing as far as zip cars and bike racks and encouraging walking?
Right. I told the applicant's attorney that the council wanted zip cars and bike racks, and he said he'll pass that message on to the client, so I'm sure he'll be able to elaborate more on that.
Okay. Go ahead.
I wanna make some clear, because we ran into using this word "zip car" before. I understand what council wants, but...
It's a brand.
Jack, we, down at, what did we come up with down at the C3 flats? Just for the record, and I know the applicants are here.
We just utilized a sign that says rental vehicle.
So something similar to that, because we got, you know, you're at the realm of...
That's a brand.
Yeah.
Zip car is just a brand.
Ms. Curry, anything else?
Pedestrian walkways. I noticed that we're okay with the ADA approved at certain intersections. I didn't know about the, is there gonna be a major back entrance and front entrance?
That's actually...
Onto Marshall and into the...
Right. I think from where the main point would be off of Marshall into the Montrose area, but the applicant's attorney could speak more to that as well.
Because we're gonna have to improve the crosswalks there then.
Right.
That's it.
Ms. Nicholas.
No questions.
Mr. Smalls.
Thank you, Ms. President. Can you go over, or maybe the applicant will in his presentation, or the, his attorney, the demolition portion of this, exactly what's being demolished? 50,000 square feet you mentioned? Just kinda give us a scope of what that is.
The 50,000 square feet that is supposed to be demolished is in the rear of the shopping center, which included the sports biller, the sports fit, the old theater. So that portion will be demolished, and then that's where the apartment complex will be done over in that area.
That then, I presume, includes that salon row or whatever it's called?
I do believe that's still gonna be present there. I don't think that's being demolished.
Okay, so it's the movie theater?
Movie theater, the sports fit, and then like a biller hall.
Okay.
I don't know the name of the hall.
Right. Not yet. On the Montrose, just again, for my own understanding, it was mentioned about walkability of the project. So I would presume any road improvements that are made along there will include sidewalks?
It should be, the applicant is responsible for when they install a light at Fourth and Montrose, expanding where there's sidewalks and also where it'd be access for a bus to pull up to discharge and allow patrons to get on the bus as well.
And just, this is a real technical point, but I'm just curious if you don't know it, let's find the width of the sidewalks.
Ooh, that's...
Okay. We'll get to it at a later time. But I was really interested in what the width of sidewalks would be.
I can find out for you, though.
Okay, all right. Ms. President, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Why don't we go ahead and call the... Good. Go ahead.
For the applicants, I wanna make sure we all understand what the granting of the overlay zone is and what the requirements are for the applicant. Do they understand that?
Yes.
There is an incentive, but it's to get back to the city as well.
That is correct.
So I'll ask if they come up, make sure we all understand that.
And the incentive for this project would be the light at Fourth and Montrose Avenue.
Say that again, say it.
The incentive for this project would be the light...
That'll be one of them.
That'll be one of them.
Correct.
At Fourth and Montrose Avenue.
Okay. That's a big project. We're working with them, but I wanna make sure everybody understands what this overlay means. Jack, you have anything to add to that? No, you are correct. This, in order to grant the overlay, they must also provide an incentive back to the city. And the Fourth and Montrose improvements, in this case, is that incentive?
That's correct. That would be one of them.
Christine, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
I just like with what the mayor just raised and mentioning that's one of them. Can we discuss what the other incentives may be? Or... I mean, I just wanna make sure we understand that that could be one of those. This is a...
I am glad to see the shopping center moving forward. I signed on to this. I've worked with them. But I know we've had some dialogue about the different incentives. I know they don't agree with everything, but there are certain requirements that we're gonna stick to to make this project successful, not only for them, but for the city, so...
You all representing?
Yes, good evening, Mr. President.
Was that a yes to my incentives package?
Not tonight. Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Edward Gibbs and Tony with offices in Largo, and I'm representing Federal Realty Investment Trust, the owner of Laurel Shopping Center. Unfortunately, because of a hearing in Philadelphia, Mr. Donley couldn't be here this evening. So I'm somewhat limited in certain concessions that I can make. I do have Mr. Lenhart, our traffic consultant, and Mr. Speech, our civil engineer, here with me this evening. First of all, we appreciate being back here. You know, we were here once before, and we had a much larger parking modification, which we were seeking at that time. We have gone back to the drawing boards. We've met with your staff. The magnitude of the parking departure is much less at this point in time for a couple of different reasons. Of course, one of which is we realized that the parking ratio that we were using was more onerous than what your city standards require. And also, we came to the conclusion that the 50,000 square, 50,000-plus square feet which we are demolishing, we had indicated, and we continue to indicate in our RO application, that we would like to have the opportunity to explore the potential to add an additional 50,000 square feet. Probably it would be out toward the front, center and the front of the center, of the shopping center as it exists today at some point in the future. What we have agreed to do is that will be market-driven, but it does create some opportunities to create synergy for the center by having pad sites, perhaps restaurants, out closer to the Route 1 frontage. Again, those will be market-driven. What we have agreed to is that if in fact we want to try to pursue that additional 50,000 square feet, we're gonna have to come in and be able to justify that we have sufficient parking at that point in time. So all those things combined to make the, to make the parking modification more manageable at this point. What I can say is this, you know, we understand that there has to be a give and take on both sides. We appreciate the efforts that the city has undertaken. We've had several meetings with Mayor Mo and staff members relative to what my client hopes are for the ultimate renovation of the center. We, you know, we have done a lot, we think, already with the landscaping package, the signing package, the facade treatments that have been changed out of the center. And so we want to do more, and we will work with you. You had a question about Marshall Avenue and the access, the 50,000-plus square feet which are gonna be removed are in the back, and I don't know what it is. So, on this plan, it's these two buildings right here that will be coming down, make room for the multifamily.
That would be the Laurel House of Horrors, as it's marked on there?
Yes, yeah.
And the Antique Center?
Antique Center of Laurel, yeah. Buildings 40 and 50, or tenants 40 and 50, as shown on the plan.
So they will go?
They will come down.
And then your other structure will go up?
Will go up in that location. And that, you know, the plan at this point is for the multifamily to be built on a podium. There will be 100 parking spaces for the multifamily directly beneath the building with, of course, access to the surface parking around it. All of the access for the multifamily is proposed to come off of Marshall Avenue. We're not proposing to bring cars in through the center. Everything is proposed to come off of Marshall Avenue. We have, relative to the conditions, and, you know, sort of my understanding that in this work session setting, we weren't gonna get overly technical tonight, but I'll try to be as responsive as I can to any questions that you have. We have, we have made no secret of the fact in many meetings that we have had that we have a problem with the traffic signal. And we understand what your position is, but our traffic engineer simply does not come to the conclusion that the warrants are satisfied for the traffic. And we would like to have our opportunity in the appropriate public hearing processes to make our case in that regard. We understand that there is a very strong sentiment on the part of the city to demand that signal. And so we're gonna end up where we end up with that.
We've got a give and take.
Indeed. Indeed, we are.
Hopefully, we won't have to take.
Well, we do understand that you're gonna get, that whatever condition you want is the condition that you're gonna get.
I wanna tell you...
We understand and appreciate it.
I wanna tell you, 40 minutes ago in that intersection, I was almost hit in a vehicle I was traveling with.
I hear you. I hear you, and I understand that. So we expect to have a dialogue there, and we're gonna come to a resolution, and whatever your decision is, it is. But I didn't get an opportunity to check out the most recent revised condition on this, but when I had talked with Ms. Pulli on conditions nine and 10, nine is the traffic signal, and 10 was the ADA compliance standards, which were required to be complied with at the time of the first use of occupancy permit. And I had asked that that be clarified, to be the first use of occupancy permit for the multifamily. I believe that you did that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, the, you know, we're looking at the widening of Fourth Street for the buses to pull over. Mr. Lenhart is, you know, is studying that right now. We'll have, we'll have a position to articulate when we get to the public hearing process. I do know this, that I did talk with Mr. Donley about the request to remove parking spaces, specifically these spaces right here. And that is not something that we control. Our tenants have lease conditions in there which specify certain parking that has to remain, certain numbers of spaces that have to be in proximity to certain uses. And so, and so it's not just us saying, okay, we'll do it. Mr. Donley is gonna have to go back and talk with tenants and see if that's something that he can accomplish legally. So I can't sit here and say that we can agree to do that, even though we might like to do it. We may not be able to negotiate that with the tenants. So I just, you know, I've been before you an awful lot of times. I've, you know, never told you what you wanna hear. Sometimes I've had to say things that are not in my best interest necessarily, but I've always tried to tell you the truth. And I always have told you the truth. So we're looking into that issue and seeing what we can do, but it's not just our decision. So with that having been said, I'd be happy to respond to any other questions. We appreciate the opportunity to be here and love being in the city.
Where are we at with the dumpster plan?
Thought it was approved.
I haven't seen any dumpsters move or anything else back there yet.
I will have to check with staff and work on it.
I'm okay with the city. I ain't seen any action over there.
Well, the last time we met with you, we didn't have an approval from the city on the dumpster plan that we had submitted.
Well, they're in violation right now, Ed.
I understand that, but I think that what we did is my client, and look, I wasn't involved in that personally, but what I understand is that my client had designed a dumpster plan for enclosures, locations, but it had to be approved by the city.
I haven't seen, yeah.
It has to be approved by the city, but I have not seen such a plan.
I would ask...
I haven't seen any of that, but I...
I would ask you to take it back to them. I'm very interested in solving that issue before we move forward as well.
I will have that, I will have that due tomorrow.
Take your time. I just want it done right. I want us to move, to clean it up over there. It's just, they're doing a lot of good things, and it just doesn't look good to them, so...
We understood your comments about that last time around.
In addition, those particular parking spaces that you were just talking, making reference to, Ms. Pulli, are those been discussed with you?
Yeah.
Okay, so by Monday the 14th, I'd like to have an answer from you all as to what... Okay? We can have that? Mr. Les, I'd see you coming in. Do you have any questions about the shopping center overlay?
No.
Okay. Anything else from council or questions, Mr. Smalls?
These parking spaces you're talking about, I'm just a slight bit confused as to where their exact location. Are we talking up near Fourth Street, or are we talking along Montrose, or...
My understanding, Council Smalls, is that they are the parking spaces along, along the driveway entering to which intersects Montrose and Fourth.
Okay, these at the top.
Right, where it says 30 United MMA.
Exactly. Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you. I'm clear.
All right. Ms. Curry.
Just one follow-up. I forgot to ask before when staff was up here. In recent construction that we've had in the city, we've encouraged the recycling of the building material versus nine million trucks going up and down the street. If you will mention that to your client, too.
I will.
And perhaps using it for Phil, what was used at the new center, too.
Okay, all right. I will ask them that.
Thanks.
It's cheaper for them anyhow.
Yeah.
Ms. Nicholas.
One more, ma'am. Where are the bus stops? Are there any bus stops in Mountrose, Lakeview, or...
Bus stops are in the right-of-way along Fourth Street.
Yeah, not anywhere on the property.
Not in the project.
But, you know, they're not on the property.
Okay.
You referenced, I think she thought they were on the property.
Pardon me?
What you were talking about on Fourth Street, I think she thought it was on the property.
Okay.
Mr. Brock, anything else?
No, sir.
Mayor Mo.
Jack, work with Mr. Gibbs at a client. We got all this technology. I want us to start putting stuff on the board so we're not holding it, and we can get that so for Monday night when it's introduced, at least people can see a map up there.
Yes, sir.
If we're able to do that, so you don't...
Okay, thank you. Thank you all very much.
Anybody else from your organization?
No, I don't think so. No, I don't think so, Mr. President. Just in case you had any questions.
They might want to say yes.
Okay.
Paying them all that money, I'm...
Yeah, good to be here, though.
All right, thank you all very much. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing you, man.
Are we ready to go for this from Monday with those questions that we need to have answered? Okay, so we'll then take that up on Monday the 14th. We'll go on to item number four. That's ordinance number 1854, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, amending the operating budget for fiscal year 2015. Ms. Saylor?
Excuse me. Mr. President, members of the council, this will be the final adjustment to the FY 2015 operating budget. We are recognizing additional revenues in local income tax, admissions and amusement, the state shared taxes, which are hotel motel, as well as the racetrack impact fee. We also received additional site work permit revenue that was unanticipated. This is an overall addition to the budget of 102,873 on the revenue side as well as the expenditure side. We are taking some expenditures that were savings throughout the budget. We are able to provide an additional transfer to this capital improvement program of $279,373. Of that, $29,373 is from additional highway user income, and that's to be dedicated to street projects, which we will come back to you to identify. Also, there'll be an additional $73,500 transferred to the pension fund. In the last ordinance, 1852, we were able to find $100,000 to transfer. So overall, in FY 15, there was an additional beyond the actuary's recommendation of $173,500 transferred to the pension fund. This will give us a total final FY 15 budget of $29,999,733.
I understand you to say the racetrack impact fees?
Yes, sir.
Is there a reason why we're all of a sudden getting those?
The receipts that had come in were enough to meet their, the amount that comes off the top that goes to the state for the first time in three years. So I didn't, we hadn't budgeted for that because of the recent history, but...
Yeah, that's what surprised me when I saw that. All right, question, Mrs. Nicholas. Ms. Querry. Mr. Les. Mr. Smalls.
I'm okay.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. I appreciate it. Item number five. Are we all ready for that? There's no problem? We'll take it up on the 14th? Thank you. All right, number five, an ordinance number 1855, an ordinance of the mayor and city council amending the capital improvement program for FY 2016. Ms. Saylor?
Yes, Mr. President. This is our first amendment to the FY 16 capital improvement program to adjust figures for major facility maintenance. As Mr. Watzke reported to you, the state awarded $150,000 for the repaving of city pathways in the parks at Laurel Lakes and Riverfront. Additionally, we were awarded $150,000 of state funds to continue renovations to the Anderson Murphy Community Center. This will be used to install a locker room in the lower levels and other internal or inside renovations. We're proposing to use $40,000 of the cable peg funds to continue the city's improvements to the city's fiber infrastructure connecting the city buildings. And $10,000 also from the peg, the cable peg funds for upgrades to the hardware in the control room of the Laurel TV studio.
Thank you. Mr. Smalls?
My question isn't about the budget. I'm fine with that, and maybe I can raise this at another time, but it's regarding the fiber. I'm just curious, as that project is moving forward. So I can raise that question at another time. I'm fine with what Michelle's putting.
Ms. Querry?
Same question.
Why don't we get an answer probably now?
I'll take care of it. What's your question?
About the fiber, Rob?
My question specifically is regarding the project itself. And you mentioned, Michelle, the project, as you described, is connecting city buildings. I'm interested in, you know, any future thoughts, considerations, plans to make any of this fiber connectivity public, for public use. Now, I understand that Laurel Lake is connected, and the public can have access.
Wireless, not to the fiber.
Okay. But the whole, if I understand it correctly, the whole purpose to this is for some kind of connectivity, be it wireless or wired.
We are, if I might, we, I've told Mr. Frost to move forward. Hopefully, he will be putting together a, what I'm calling a master plan for infrastructure on fiber for the city. There is some federal legislation that could affect how cables put in and whether you will end up renting the cable and charging municipalities and local government. But I also want our system so we have control of it. Right now, most of our fiber that is put in is done by Comcast. We're at the will of Comcast. I told, it's very costly to put fiber in, but I think it's time that we do a, what I'm calling a master plan for the infrastructure of fiber through our city buildings and elsewhere around the city. And it could be a, you know, it depends on the cost and how far we're running, but you could be talking a 10-year, 15-year plan to really build it out, even if we did one project year. And as you know, council's already supported those efforts because we have run some cable, some fiber already, which has allowed us to get the internet over to Laurel Lakes. There is a lot more going on when we talk about cameras, when we talk about Police Department in particular, all their cameras for streaming, all of those things. It's taken a lot more, I guess, am I correct when I say taken a lot more bandwidth and things like that? So I've told him to move forward on that, and that's really what we're doing here, to kind of make sure, go to the next level, which will then open up to allow for other areas of the city, as you're well aware. We want to do the parks or any of the other buildings to have a public access, you know, for people to enjoy the internet if they're going to read a book or whatever it may be, you know, within the parks or so.
I'd just like to ask, Mayor, when the time is appropriate, if Mr. Frost or anyone you designate could sort of give the council an overview of exactly what the project includes and encompasses.
We will actually, my intent is for him to write it up in draft and bring it to council and have input. This all relies on the commitment from council members because this requires funding. And you all have ideas as well, but I think Kevin's on with many of the things that have been brought up in the past years that you all are looking for as well. But yes, it will be coming to you all. Thank you.
Ms. Querry, anything further? Mr. Les? Ms. Nicholas? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Saylor.
Thank you.
Number six on our agenda, consideration of a bid recommendation for purchase of police vehicles. Mr. Free?
Good evening, Mr. President.
No cars down yet, chief. I thought that might be tough.
The Department of Public Works put together a recommendation to purchase five police cars. State of Maryland had put out a competitive bid and awarded a contract for Impalas to Chriswell Chevrolet. Funding for the five cars is presently in the CIP FL 001 account. We're looking to purchase three marked police cars at $25,666 each and two unmarked Impalas at $27,304 each. The prices are high because this is the first year that the manufacturer is actually offering to install emergency equipment at the factory and ship it here already, you know, which we believe will probably save us several thousand dollars having it done by them. So it's recommended that the council would approve these purchases for $131,606.
Mr. Smalls?
I'm fine.
Ms. Nicholas? Mr. Les? Get your mic.
Are these the longer-wheel-based Impalas for the police? Actually, two Impalas. One made for the civilians and one made for police. I think the ones made for police are based on the Australian. I'm just asking the question.
They put computer chips into the vehicles for...
No, actually, it's a longer-wheel-based car to give more room for police officers. Have you looked, have you looked at them, chief? Do they look bigger inside? I'm just asking, because I read that in one of those magazines I get.
They're pretty standard of what we have now.
Okay, same size?
There's a police package, and there's a civilian package.
Okay.
And I believe what Mr. Free is making reference to, these are under the police package. These are the heavyed up, that they are designed specifically for police work.
But you didn't notice that the inside was a little larger?
They came back with the Caprices. Now, the Caprice is offered is bigger than the Impalas.
Okay, I'm just asking. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Nicholas?
Question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Free. We'll be ready to do this on the 14th as well. Item number seven on our agenda, consideration of a bid recommendation for street, sidewalk, curb, and gutter contract. Mr. Free, again.
Yeah, we had a bid opening on August 24th in the council chambers, and we opened three bids. E and R Services had written out 733, well, 732 and some odd thousand dollars. Manuel Lewis Construction was 911 and some, and MT Laney was 1.3 million. During our review, we noticed that the E and R had done a mathematical error, and we asked them to revise what was submitted and the amount of $10,000, which should have brought their bid to $742,951, $168,000 lower than the other two bids. We reviewed their references, which were the state of Maryland and Prince George's County and Montgomery County, and they said that they had done outstanding work, so we thought we would go ahead and use them instead of tossing it out and awarding them to do the work for $742,951.
Thank you, sir.
We'd also ask for a $60,000 contingency, just because of some things we find when we start digging up the roads and sidewalks. It still would save us almost a little over $230,000 in the CIP by doing it this way.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Nicholas?
I'm fine.
Mr. Les?
I'm fine, Mr. President.
Ms. Querry?
I'm fine.
Mr. Smalls?
I agree with council.
Thank you very much. Do we have anything else to come forward to council this evening? Let's go out and say hello to our new deputy chief.